So Brian, I've got seven thirty in quorum, can we begin?
I believe so. Usually Mark says to start at the time and he'll pick it up when we start.
All right, I'm gonna start then. Good evening. As a preliminary matter, this is Judy Vetter, Chair of the Finance Committee. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Finance Committee members, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Mark Adler.
Uh, yes, hey.
Vikram Chawber.
Present.
Dennis O'Connell.
Present.
Erin Howard. I don't see her yet. Hannah Kane. See Hannah's connected. I don't. Hannah Kane. She's connecting to audio. Jordan Rubin.
I'm here.
Carlos Garcia.
I'm here.
Mark Murray. Okay, and Hannah, I can see. Hannah, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay, great. All right, so. All right, um, and staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizakar.
Present.
Kristen Lass, will she be joining us this evening?
She's not, no.
Okay, and Alexander Martinez. Great. School Committee and Administration, please respond in the affirmative. Sandra Fritz.
Present.
Lindsay Heffron. Del McGee.
Present.
Jason Palich.
Present.
John Lewinsky.
Present.
John, uh, Joe Sawyer, excuse me.
Present.
This open meeting of the Finance Committee with the School Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, we are convening by Zoom, as posted by the town's website, identifying how the public may join. I will now cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Judy Vetter, will introduce each speaker who has the lead role for a particular item. After they conclude their remarks, I'll go down the line of Finance Committee members first, and then to staff members, inviting each by name to provide a comment and question. Please hold until your name is called. We will then open up the discussion by show of hand. Please remember to mute and unmute your phone by pressing star six, or mute your computer when you are not speaking, so as not to trigger your camera feed or background noise. If members wish to engage in colloquially with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. I'm now calling to order the March eleventh, two thousand twenty-one Finance Committee. We would like to welcome and thank the School Committee for joining us this evening in this important discussion of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget. Dr. Sawyer, Superintendent of Schools, if you would, please, provide us with an overview of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two School Department budget request.
Thank you, Ms. Vetter. And if you bear with me one moment, I'll share my screen. And just to be clear, I'm not sure earlier, Mr. Patrick Collins, the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, also joining us this evening, and he will present along with me.
All right, thank you. Sorry, Pat, you weren't on my list, even though I did see you there.
Here.
No worries. All right, let me just get back to my window here, my apologies. Okay, can people see that screen now? All right, so again, it's a glad we're able to present this information to you this evening. Start off with a overview in terms of just the pure numbers of the budget recommendation that I filed in early February with the School Committee, the annual superintendent's recommendation. Now, that's for a town appropriation of seventy-five point four four million, which is an increase of seven point four four million, or ten point nine five percent. This recommendation essentially maintains the current staffing levels in programs that we have in place this year, that we have in place now, and also opens the new Beal School as planned. I think it's important to note that this does not restore any of the one point nine million dollars in budget cuts that included almost thirty FTE positions that were cut for this current fiscal year. And in terms of opening the new Beal School, this does, of course, require adding new staff, because not only are we moving the operation from Beal to a new school, it's a much larger school, because the intent of that building is not only to replace an aging school building, but it's to free up space and reduce the overcrowding we have in our other elementary schools in order to provide equitable class sizes, access to educational spaces for special subjects and the like across all five of our elementary schools, which will all be for, all become K through four schools, and be able to provide, for the first time, sufficient space for full-day kindergarten for all students in Shrewsbury Public Schools. Unfortunately, because of the structural deficit situation that we have with our town government, this results in a budget gap compared to Mr. Mizakar's initial recommendation for the town budget, which, of course, is based on him needing to present a budget that is balanced based on the revenue that he could project for next year, which is not aligned with what our costs are. So you can see on this slide that Mr. Mizakar made a three point seven six percent increased recommendation. Just carrying our program forward is about eight and a half percent. That's the result not only of the typical inflationary pressures that we face, but also in order to move past a couple of things we had to do this year as essentially survival tactics, not to cut even more than that one point nine million dollars, which included utilizing some one-time savings from the school closure last year, as well as the fact that our Teachers Association and our Assistant Principals Association reached agreements with the School Committee to take only half of their scheduled compensation increases, which saved over one million dollars to the bottom line. And it also resulted, as a result of the salary freeze and compensation freeze, I should say, that our secretarial support staff, IT support staff, and non-union school administrators had for this current year. In addition to that eight point five percent, there's another three percent almost that's required for the additional staffing to open the new Beal School. So you can see there's about a three point two million dollar budget gap just to carry forward what we need. And then when you add the Beal increase on top of that, which is a little under one point seven million dollars, it results in a four point nine million dollar budget gap between what is projected to be available from Mr. Mizakar and what our costs would be to do those things. Unfortunately, this is the second consecutive year that we have not asked for any improvements to match the five-year strategic plan that we put together and that we're charged with by the School Committee a number of years ago now. Knowing that the budget cycles were just too difficult due to the structural deficit, it really made no sense to spend time thinking about making these kinds of improvements in this current environment. It also doesn't restore anything that we lost this year. And of course, we've talked about over time, if we stand still for too long, this leads to gradual decline, falling behind. And this is not, we think, the kind of community that Shrewsbury aspires to be. In terms of the reduction plan that I recommended in a subsequent meeting in order to close this budget gap, if that is the only available revenue that we'd receive, the first phase with that would be just to not hire the additional thirty-two point six staff that we would need to open the Beal School as intended, that we would then not relieve that overcrowding at the elementary level, we would not provide full-day kindergarten for all students. And then beyond that, we would need to reduce forty-eight point seven full-time equivalent staff across various places in the school district. That would result in increased class sizes at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school. Would also reduce educational programming options. To summarize, that would mean the reduction of two administrators. That would be the principal position, and Patton that was scheduled to come online and continue to have Dr. Lazard, who's an Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-being, remain as the acting principal there, who would not be replacing the Parker Road Preschool Principal, who is currently on leave and in medical leave and has indicated she's not returning after the close of this year. We would, we've backfilled that with a director-level position that came out of a special education team chair role, which we would not backfill. In addition to that, we would reduce eleven elementary teachers, six middle-school team teachers, twelve high-school teachers or professional-level educators, four point five FTE grades K through eight, special subjects or so-called allied arts teachers, two point five special education positions, and ten point seven paraprofessional positions. And you can see to the right there kind of what percentage of our current staffing that represents in each case for a total of forty-eight point seven FTE. So to summarize, you know, by reduced, by deferring the planned opening of Beal as it's intended, that would be almost one point seven million, thirty-two point six positions, the reduction plan would reduce another forty-eight point seven. It's important to note that there still is another two hundred and fifty thousand plus dollars to get to close the entire gap. But we wanted to see, you know, let things mature a little bit more to see how much further we might need to go. Hopefully, we don't need to go in this direction at all. And you can see the bottom-line total there would result in eighty-one point three positions reduced from my budget filing, forty-eight point seven existing positions in our current program, and the thirty-two point six new positions that were requested to open the new Beal School. At this time, I'm turning it over to Mr. Collins to talk a little bit about our kindergarten planning, and then some other projections, looking at a little more long-term perspective in that we think information that you'll find to be valuable.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So first of all, knowing that there is a significant budget gap, we prepared three different scenarios with respect to kindergarten planning in connection with the opening of the new Beal School, since there's a lot of questions about that and how this reduction plan might impact the opening of that school in the provision of full-day kindergarten, as previously mentioned by Dr. Sawyer. So using this symbolism, if you will, of a stoplight to describe what we see as three different planning scenarios that we're using. So the first one would be the so-called green light scenario, which is that we receive this sufficient funding as recommended by Dr. Sawyer in his budget plan. We know that that would be, at this point, contingent upon a successful override. So there's lots of contingencies here, and that's what we're doing, is contingency planning. So this is our current recommendation, which would be to open up the new Beal School as planned and as budgeted, and also implement the elementary school redistricting plan. This was a pretty heavy lift that the School Committee and a redistricting committee took on, primarily through last calendar year. It was disrupted a little bit through the pandemic, but it took almost about a calendar year to complete that process in looking at a total of up to nineteen different elementary rezoning scenarios, and resulting in a School Committee vote in February to decide how the new districts would be designed upon the opening of the new Beal School as planned. So this green light scenario allows us to do all that elementary redistricting, draw down enrollment at existing schools, provide for better class sizes, and also full-day kindergarten tuition-free for all of our kindergarten students. We know that the data, outside data, supports the fact that in the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty school year, that ninety-six point four percent of Massachusetts kindergarten students were in a full-day kindergarten program. And only thirty-eight of three hundred and sixteen school districts charged the tuition at that particular time. So we are clearly in a minority in Shrewsbury with respect to both charging a tuition and also not being able to provide a full-day kindergarten to all of our students. So that's the green, green light scenario. The next one is the opposite, if you will. It's a worst-case scenario. We certainly don't believe this to be, have a high probability, but just in terms of explaining all of the options that, you know, if there were no override on the ballot or a failed override question, and we didn't have sufficient funding to open up Beal School as planned, either from an educational standpoint or from an operational standpoint on the municipal side, that we would have to defer entering that building and defer the elementary redistricting plan and stay at the existing Beal School. That would cause us to have to, again, conduct a lottery for a limited amount of full-day kindergarten seats. And then there was also a question about, would we school district continue to charge a fee, of course, which would be subject to School Committee vote, if you will. And so this is just one scenario to try to anticipate a question, what if? What if the worst-case scenario played out? And what if the School Committee decided to charge, for example, an annual tuition of twelve hundred dollars? What, what might that yield? And it would be in the range of two hundred and twenty thousand to two hundred and sixty-five thousand, depending on the enrollment in the seats that we would have available. So we certainly hope that this is not the situation that plays out the worst-case scenario. And then the third scenario is the so-called yellow light scenario, which is, again, either no override on the ballot or a failed override question, in that we might occupy the new Beal School in a limited fashion. And under this so-called limited fashion, you know, one might kind of imagine that we'd basically be taking our existing program as it stands, which is a K-one program at the current Beal School, and shifting it over to the new Beal School and occupying about forty percent of that building's capacity. We would have to defer the elementary redistricting plan because we wouldn't have sufficient funding to pull that off. And again, we would have to conduct a lottery for the full-day kindergarten seats. And again, would be also subject to the possibility if the School Committee wanted to kind of entertain this idea of charging a fee. And again, in the context of a five, almost a four point nine million dollar budget deficit, that, you know, charging a fee does not solve that problem. Two hundred and twenty thousand to two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars does not solve a four point nine million dollar budget gap. So it's not like, as if you could fee yourself out of this particular problem. So that's the kindergarten planning scenarios. Again, this is the budget recap, as Dr. Sawyer mentioned before. We're looking at the four point eight eight million dollar budget cap. And again, it's not any kind of attribution about what the town manager might think is sufficient funding. It's just, he, of course, has to provide a balanced budget, and Dr. Sawyer has to present what he sees as the most befitting educational program and services going forward, and that's why we have this gap in front of us. And then looking beyond fiscal twenty-two, we know that this strong structural deficit ongoing continues to jeopardize our ability to provide services in the way that we would like to. Can't restore the educational staff in programming that was previously cut. We know that we cut foreign language at Sherwood Middle School this year. Just as an example, we cut fifth-grade teachers this year. A whole host of other staff were cut this year. And that's what this structural deficit continues to impose upon us. So, you know, it definitely twords our ability to implement our strategic plans and make any kind of improvement. So we're neither maintaining nor improving. And kind of looking forward, you know, what we do need to consider in terms of projecting where we're going to be to try to plan our way to a better place, is we're looking at student enrollment, our special education needs, certainly the diversity of our student population, including the English-language learner population. And we also need to be looking at the labor market and staffing costs. And it's very difficult right now to fill even some of our existing positions in the current labor market. And then we also need to be looking forward to not only responding to the current mandates and regulations that we have, which just continue to grow every year, but look towards, you know, future additional mandates and how we're going to fund those as well. So that's kind of a planned-forward piece looking ahead. And so that kind of leads into this next piece, which is an expense forecast that we recently did. This is just fine-tuning, basically, a five-year financial forecast that we finished in December, and we presented publicly in early January. And this is kind of like the next-level detail. So what does our budget look like, you know, for fiscal twenty-two? And then going forward for the four subsequent years. And you can see there, this is, this is presenting, basically, what we see as a maintaining services scenario. Not, not really making improvements, but just maintaining and forecasting expenses as, you know, as best we can for the next five years, taking into consideration all those factors that I talked about before. And so the bottom line, you can see that the kind of maintaining in using the best projection that we have at hand is the percentage increases that are going to be required to maintain services for fiscal twenty-three, for example, is four point one percent, and then three point nine, three point seven, and about three point eight percent. So just slightly under four percent in terms of the fuel that the school budget needs annually, looking forward. And I will say that when we did the five-year forecast in December, that this has proven out through history. All you have to do to kind of validate in another different way is to look backwards. And when you look backwards, and you look backwards for twenty years, you can see that the average annual rate of school budget increase was four point five percent. So that's a fact, and this, this kind of look forward validates that, if you will, just at a little bit slightly lesser percentage rate of just about four percent, if one were to round it. So if you were to take that, and then on this next piece here, what we're saying is that if part of a construct of an agreement between the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee were to be this, this provision of presenting the community with an override that had built into it stability, multi-year stability of almost guaranteed percentage increases for the next four years beyond fiscal twenty-two at the rate of four percent, what would that mean in terms, in comparison to that forecast that I just presented to you? So in fiscal twenty-three, you can see in red there, it would actually be a deficit we'd have to trim off about seventy-four thousand dollars from that if the agreement or compact, if you will, were that the School Department had a four percent annual increase. In year two, kind of this day minimus, it's almost like a break-even situation on an eighty-one point eight million dollar budget. This is just really so small an amount, but it's basically saying that we'd be even. And that, in the fourth year, that there would be a projected slight amount of money for reinvestment, two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to reinvest towards improvement. And so it's in years four and five that we might see some improvement if this forecast were to hold true. And so that, just so you have a sense of the numbers, if you were to take that two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars and say invested in staff, that becomes a recurring cost. And so that's why, in the fifth year, you can see that we've carried that forward and put an escalation on it of four percent cost increase. And while the budget that's forecast would have a so-called four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar excess, if you will, available for improvement, we would need to subtract out the prior-year monies that had been incurred and caused recurring costs, so that the net new money for reinvestment would be a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. So that's how you read this chart. Now, on a four-year basis, there'd be just about three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars for, available for making improvement. So what does that mean to us on, on a base of, you know, seventy-five to eighty-eight million dollar budget? It would be about just under a hundred thousand dollars on average over that four-year basis, or one tenth, point one four percent, or one tenth of one percent of our budget. So a very small amount, so a four percent kind of construct is really kind of just treading water, if you will, and really not making a lot of progress. On the next slide, you'll see even what might seem to be a small percentage increase, but if you were to increase it to four and a quarter percent, that actually makes a fairly significant difference. So that you can see that at four and a quarter percent, there are monies available in fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six for reinvestment in making improvement. And all that reinvestment over those four years would total up to just about one point two seven million dollars, or three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars annual, about one-half of one percent of the fiscal twenty-two budget. So, and I would make mention, too, that in fiscal twenty-two, you know, if this were to go forward, of course, the School Department would have a significant budget increase as presented by Dr. Sawyer of ten point nine percent. And so that would be the improvement for that year, that would fulfill our strategic priorities. That would fulfill, you know, this community's strategic plan to build a modern elementary school and solve the elementary space problem. And then each successive year, you know, we would look, be, be looking to make improvements across the district and reinvest those dollars to help us improve in other areas as well. And then finally, you know, what does another quarter percent or four and a half percent agreement annually look for the School Department? And of course, it provides even more investment. Over that four-year basis would be two million dollars, or about three-quarters of one percent. Again, these dollars are small on a percentage basis in terms of improvement. But the, that would be certainly significant and allow us to make many more improvements along the way. So that's kind of the refined forecast that we've presented to the School Committee. And that information was also provided to the Board of Selectmen in hopes of reaching, you know, an agreement, if you will, about how to proceed with an override amount and have built into it this compact or agreement about what the School Department annual increases would look like going forward. And so in terms of this structural deficit, you know, we've, we've talked about how we can solve this problem. And we wanted to talk about two basic options. And this is just very timely, because the first one, and this is, this is a slide that we've used, I think it was probably even now going on a month and a half ago. So one option that we talked about was receiving, and I'm going to focus and repeat this word, unrestricted, unrestricted federal stimulus aid that could be used for any educational purpose, including funding personnel for unrelated to COVID operations. And so what's, what's the positive about that in terms of trying to help solve our problem? Or the attributes, if you will, of relying on federal stimulus to solve our problem, well, it's out of our control. We know that something was passed just today, signed today by President Biden. He's going to talk about that in about five minutes on TV. And so, you know, the, the timing at the time didn't quite match our budget schedule. But now that we have that information, we can act upon it. Once we get more definitive information, we know what's happened on a macro, national level. We don't have any specifics, really, from, at the School Department, from the Department of Education. That's going to take weeks to kind of unravel. And typically, and what we do know, and I thank Representative Kane for providing what she received as kind of a recap on a statewide basis, what we might receive, that the School Department dollars that are going to flow through for, for federal stimulus are going to have the same type of restrictions that they have had already for previous buckets of stimulus money. It's restricted money. And what I mean by that is, for example, and included in that document that Representative Kane sent, is that of whatever total amount that we might receive for federal stimulus dollars direct to the School Department, that we are going to be required to set aside twenty percent of those dollars to provide for so-called academic recovery. And that's typically, I mean, I, I think it's viewed to be additional services beyond the, the school year and beyond the school day, like summer school programs or school vacation programs to help students make up the lost learning that they had. the lost learning that they had. So what I mean by this is that those dollars don't help solve our struc-, our structural deficit. The really only option to solve our structural deficit is the operational override option. And that is within our control. And it certainly can manage that timeline. And that's what provides recurring revenue. And the stimulus money, of course, as we know, is one-time money. So there's obviously two flavors of money. You know, one-time money and recurring money. And in order to get ourselves to a better place strategically, we need the, the latter, the recurring kind of money. And at this point, I just want to talk about, again, how new stimulus funding is not a solution for us. And I did talk about this twenty, as an example, this twenty percent allocation going towards academic recovery activities. And that the other monies are restricted. We know will be restricted to cover COVID costs, of which we have many. And we're, we're facing reopening schools again, we know for elementary students on April fifth and in later April, the middle school students. And, you know, what are we talking about spending money on? We're talking about purchasing additional student desks. Probably going to have to procure and rent tents. And we're looking at a whole host of COVID-related costs, probably some additional staffing for cleaning because we've got condensed periods of lunchtime now to get that done between lunches. So that's where that stimulus money is going to go. It's not going to go towards new teachers or putting in, restoring programs that we lost. It's going to go toward COVID-related expenses. So I think at this point, turn it over to Dr. Sawyer to kind of just carry us through to the end here.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. In the presentations I've made since I filed my budget, I've characterized our situation as that we are facing an education emergency. And that is a result of the combination of the effects of the pandemic in this serious budget crisis that we face as an educational organization as a result of the structural deficit we have as a town government. I, I try to avoid being overly dramatic or hyperbolic, but I, I really don't think we can understate what a difficult situation we are in. And if we do not have adequate resources next year and are actually cutting resources back at a time when our students most need them, it is going to have a very serious, long-term negative effect on the development of our, our community's children. And that is something that we all need to be cognizant of as we think about what decisions we need to make as a community making, moving forward. Obviously, you know, the cost of an education emergency, when you think about cost, naturally think about dollars and cents. And so this has a bottom line attached to it. And that's some of the details that Mr. Collins just presented to you. But I want to remind everyone who's watching and participating in this meeting that there are other costs, and that's the cost to our students. When I look at this picture that's on our, one of our homepage photos on our website, I think that really captures the spirit of what our Shrewsbury High School graduates experience as they really experience the joy of having completed their pre-K through twelve education. And we know that our students do exceptionally well on a whole variety of fronts academically, co-curriculars in terms of their community service. And they go on to be very successful in whether that choose higher ed, the military, the world of work. And, and we continue to hear both through survey data as well as anecdotal data that our graduates are extremely well-prepared for life beyond Shrewsbury High School. And that's a testament to all of our educators from preschool all the way through high school. And there will be a very significant cost if we are not able to respond to this education emergency. But I will share, as I have at previous presentations, that I personally, as, as a resident of Shrewsbury for more than two decades and a school district leader for more than two decades, I, I truly do not believe that our community will allow this to happen to our town's children. There, there were going to be significant consequences if these kinds of devastating cuts are required to our schools. I do believe that Shrewsbury is a, is a community that values the education of its children. And I do believe we will respond to this emergency by providing the resource our educators need in order to meet our children's need. So with that, we'll stop sharing my screen and we'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has relative to the information we presented.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins. So at this point, what I'd like to do is go down through the, the Finance Committee and see what we have for questions and comments. And as I said, then we'll kind of open it up more to full dialogue by show of hands. So I'm going to begin with Mark Adler. Any questions or comment?
No, no, I'm kidding. Yes, lots. So I, every year I've been involved in town government, whether it's as a town meeting member or here on the Finance Committee. And every year that I've had a kid in the school, which is now thirteenth year, because my kid started in kindergarten and he's now a senior at the high school. I've been hearing about the structural deficit. And, and some years it's been worse than others. And in, I guess it was fourteen, we overrode two and a half to jump the budget up a bit. But it clearly didn't solve the problem because here we are still. And I'm asking on behalf of all the town meeting members we're supposed to represent as a finance committee and the voters who would decide on an override if it came up. How, what is the cause of this structural deficit? What is the structural deficit about? So that way you can maybe explain that. This presentation that we've had tonight and other presentations that we've been hearing about have talked a lot about the effect, the result and the options. But I'm curious about how did we get here? And I don't know if the school committee wants to answer that or Patrick or Joe or someone else wants to handle that.
So Dr. Sawyer or Mr. Mizikar, do either of you want to?
I will, I will defer to Mr. Mizikar, you know, in terms of municipal finances. But in terms of the, you know, the simple explanation from my perspective is that the, the cost to provide the services that this community is receiving and wishes to receive is greater than the amount of revenue that can be raised under the limitations of Proposition Two and a Half and other sources of funding that the town receives. And so it's essentially costs, even in a very well-managed, low-cost local government, inflationary costs, outstrip the ability for the revenue to keep up. But I, I, I will defer to Mr. Mizikar for any other explanation.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Of course, Dr. Sawyer is right on. Mr. Adler, as you described it, you said the two thousand and fourteen override jump-started the town or provided a jolt to the town. That's all an override can do, right? It's just, it's a single infusion of money that helps build the base. Beyond the first year of the override, the base only increases by two and a half percent. And as illustrated through school historical trends and town historical trends, the cost of doing business and providing services exceeds two and a half percent per year. So that jolt that came almost six years ago helped for a while. But it wouldn't, there's no single override that would ever sustain, you know, in perpetuity. You'd have to have Proposition Three and a Half or Four and a Half, something like that in order to eliminate the structural deficit forever. Obviously, that's not on the table. So the plan that we began discussing utilizing a model from the town of Arlington is having a conversation with the community, quite simply, what we're talking about right now and saying that regular infusions of additional tax revenue above what can be raised in the levy on an annual basis will be required in order to main and maintain and hopefully improve service levels.
Thank you. Mark, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I mean, again, just could, I'm asking this on behalf of everybody who could be watching this and would need to know. I think what you're describing is, you know, a, a really good description of, you know, the, the budget deficit that we face and how budget deficits are caused. But why is it structural? What is it about the school budget that put us into this position? And are we having this same problem in other departments? And if not, why not? And what happened this year that brought us to this emergency level? Aside from Beal, which obviously is a real asterisk in the, in the, in the, in the situation.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll begin and then I'll defer to Mr. Mizikar. I don't think it's limited to the school department. But I don't think you would find a school department in any Massachusetts school district that is able to maintain its services at, say, a two and a half percent rate year over year. In, in terms of just what, what the general cost of, of doing businesses, Mr. Mizikar mentioned is in terms of providing that kind of service. I want to be clear, it isn't just this year. This current, not next year, this current year. I just remind everyone that we cut two million dollars out of our spending plan. And then thank goodness, our employees were willing to make a very significant sacrifice in their compensation that saved us another one point two million that we would have had to cut. And then we also utilized, I think what most school districts were able to do was take any savings they experienced last spring and probably made that kind of a cushion or reserve or way to kind of muddle through a little bit this current year and into future years. We basically were forced to take those all as emergency savings in one fell swoop. And, and, you know, avoid another, I forget the exact number, but roughly another million dollars worth of cuts. So we, we had a devastating year this year. If it weren't for the, the money we were receiving for very specific COVID expenses, we, we would be upper creek this year. Next year, that compounds because every year you have a problem and a structural deficit problem is going to compound over time. I think in terms of, you know, year-over-year pieces where I think Mr. Adler mentioned, sometimes there are, some years are better than others. There are elements of a school department budget, and those who have been on the Finance Committee for some time understand that one of those volatile areas for a school department budget is special education. Sometimes special education costs can go up dramatically. Sometimes they can be reduced more than what was expected. So sometimes it, you know, whether or not we have a year where we can maintain what we have, maybe add a couple of things around the edges, or whether we're forced to make reductions can often depend on that large element of our budget. And then, you know, in terms of, you know, you mentioned certainly that opening a new school and responding to the enrollment pressure we've experienced for some time is, is another factor as far as fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. But that's, I guess, a perspective from the school department, but I don't know if Mr. Mizikar wants to refer to anything as far, as far as how that is baked into the municipal department, which I think the school department readily acknowledges that over a number of years, and certainly in my history in Shrewsbury, municipal departments have gone without. They've either held in place and treaded water and not made necessary or desired improvements, or in some cases actually made cuts to municipal departments in years that the school department got a larger percentage of, of an increase that was available from the money that was in, you know, revenue available. And, and certainly mutually of mutual concern is, is deferred maintenance or, or capital projects on, you know, the majority of the town's buildings, of course, and square footage are school buildings. So all those things are certainly where we collectively as a community, both across school and municipal departments have felt the, the effects of this structural deficit. But I'll, I'll again defer to Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Certainly agree with Dr. Sawyer's statements. You know, the term structural deficit just identifies a, a cyclical or ongoing situation where revenues fall short of required expenditure. So it, it just means that, you know, as we talk about all the time and I try to harp on all the time, we can't use one-time revenues like free cash, money from the savings account. We need a sustainable revenue source through our paycheck to compare it to personal finances in order to cover the car payment. We can't always rely, you know, on a one-time infusion from the lottery or, you know, some other single revenue source that we're going to deplete. So, you know, simply, you know, that's the structural nature, cyclical nature of our financial challenge. There's, there, I think the difference that everyone feels from the municipal side to the, to the school side is how we present our budgets historically. Right? So the town manager presents a balanced budget through fiscal projection one. And the superintendent presents, you know, the needs-based budget for the school department within a reasonably close timeframe. And historically, I think that's often meant that the municipal budget reductions weren't surfaced in the light of day, so to speak, that they were just handled because of a lack of the, the lack of revenue and inability to get there. It just wasn't a big part of the conversations of what was being excluded from the budget conversation. Certainly, some of that happened with the, the Finance Committee hearings with department heads, but it, you know, it was never the town manager coming out and saying, we have a hundred million dollars worth of revenue, the, the schools need fifty-two and the town needs fifty-two. Like, that's not kind of how the budget was presented every year. So it's, you know, more highlights on the, the, the deficits on the school side because it's an independent person, the superintendent, making that initial budget recommendation. I think, you know, outside of Beal, we are facing, you know, two different financial obstacles than we were in February of two thousand and twenty. February two thousand twenty, before the actuary came back and recommended revising mortality tables for the pension system based upon nationwide standards, we thought that the pension system was fully funded. And we're proposing a little less than two million dollars in funding for that when we actually funded it almost six million in the FY twenty budget and will continue to need to fund it three point three million in the FY twenty-two budget. The second, of course, is the pandemic-related aspects of local receipts reductions, which is about, in total, if you use the FY nineteen through FY fourteen trend, we're about three point eight million dollars less than that five-year trajectory. So we are experiencing revenue reductions which, you know, overcomes even the reduction in the, the funding for the pension system and exacerbates the, the structural problem that we're having. So when we didn't have enough regular revenue and we reduce our revenue, our third largest revenue source being the local receipts and with the state having to take austere measures in FY twenty-one and level fund state aid, thankfully, only provide level funding, but not additional funding. That compounds as well. So if, you know, in my opinion, if you go back to fiscal year twenty and look at what our revenue projection was in February of, of twenty twenty versus what we have to deal with now pandemic-related and otherwise, it's a different picture.
Mrs. Vedder?
Mr. Collins?
Yeah, could I just add in terms of Mr. Adler's question? I, I just wanted to add a little bit more context as well, and that is that you know, kind of the why question or it, it almost, almost one might believe or if someone were watching that, you know, an override is an anomaly or it's some sort of signal of, of, of problematic management or something like that. And it's a kind of pejorative kind of thing. And so what, what I would just want to make people, because we get caught up in the Shrewsbury experience, right? We all live in Shrewsbury and we get caught up in our own experience. But in the, in the same, from fiscal fifteen, the time of the last override for Shrewsbury, operational override for Shrewsbury, from that fiscal year forward to the present, there have been approximately two hundred and ten override questions across the Commonwealth. So this is, this is a commonplace financial tool or practice or problem or however you want to, terminology you want to use that occurs across the Commonwealth for the reasons that Mr. Mizikar and Dr. Sawyer said, that there's a, there's a cap on your revenue. I mean, if you're running a business and you were to say, look, it, I'm going to, I'm going to limit the amount of revenue that I can take in this year. And, and, but you have ever-growing expenses. You, you would kind of Um, you, you would kind of understand the problem on kind of a micro level. So this is, uh, something that many communities face, uh, every year. And there's been over 210 override questions since, uh, fiscal 15.
Thank you.
Um, if I, if I can just finish then, Judy?
Okay, thank you.
That, uh, thank you all. Um, you know, I, I, I think that's a great lesson. I hope everyone takes that, uh, to heart that we learn about um, the long-term situation here, that this isn't just a one-time problem, but that we can really tackle some of this and get through some of this and, you know, carry it forward and for a long-term solution. I've worked with, uh, the school departments through other channels I've been involved with, especially Patrick and Joe and, and the school committee members, they really know what they're doing. I have a great deal of confidence that these numbers are not, uh, uh, anything but really straight up what we need. And, you know, I, I think it's good that we're having this dialogue and I wish, um, I, I, I wish everybody was watching in, in the town was watching this and I hope that something can be worked out with this selectmen uh, shortly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vickent Chommer. Any questions or comments?
Yes, uh, thank you, Judy. Um, first of all, thank you, uh, Dr. Sawyer and, and Mr. Collins for that, that, um, that presentation was very well laid out and, and you presented the problem uh, very eloquently and, and it definitely made an impact on me and, and I'm sure other people who are watching. Um, I, I, I would basically go one step beyond, um, Dr. Sawyer's description of calling this an emergency crisis. I, I think it has the potential of being an existential threat to, um, the well-being of our schools and, and, and our town. Uh, and I say that because, um, uh, in my experience, any organization like our school system, uh, the greatness of that organization is not the big buildings or the facilities. It's basically the people who run that organization. Um, and 45 cuts of experienced people may look from a mathematical pie chart, something that you can easily, easily replace when you get your money, but no, it doesn't work like that. These are talented individuals. These are people with, who have been nurtured, who have, um, understood over many years have developed relationships within the, the school system and, uh, have generated an expertise. They're not worker bees that can just simply be replaced by just hiring another bunch of worker bees. So, um, the well-being of any organization is dependent upon its, on its people. And if we basically take out, we have these cuts, if we don't get the override through and, and these cuts do happen, um, it, it will have, uh, significant short-term and, and long-term effects, um, not only on the school system, but on the town, uh, per se. So I, I feel very strongly that, um, we definitely have to use our influence and hope, uh, we get this on the ballot. Um, I am very confident in, in the numbers that were presented and, uh, that this is definitely a need. Um, and finally, I would like to say that, um, um, it has my full support as far as, uh, whatever the schools need. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis O'Connell, any questions, comments?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the presentation, especially the updated, more uh, precise presentation that you gave today. Um, yeah, I've been in the town for going on 30 years. Um, I've watched the school system for a number of years. I've had two children go through it and graduate, uh, first, first grade through, uh, high school. And I can tell you, I think it's a great educational system. And I think, you know, teachers go above and beyond. I know early on both my kids experienced that. But I can also say, having gone through it for this long, I've actually watched it slowly deteriorate. It's very sad. It's, it, the teachers try their best, administration tries their best, but we continue. You know, almost every year I think there's been a budget crisis. Some bigger than others where we've had cuts, we've cut programs. Uh, the fees that individual citizens are now paying are very high compared to when I started and there weren't any. Uh, and those are all things that have had to be done. Um, and it does come back to, as you said, a structural deficit because I believe if you go to the other municipalities, they've made cuts over the years. And, you know, police department, fire department have had to cut a lot of things as well. So this isn't a school issue only, it's a town issue. And it is structural because we can only raise it by 2.5%. And one thing I will say is I don't know that we planned very well for the last 20 years on how to grow this town. We've put in a lot of housing, a lot of new students, probably continue to get new students. And those things have hurt it. So kudos to what the school department has done. You've done a great job. I can tell you my kids have done phenomenal coming out of here, but I think it gets harder every year for kids to have that same experience. Now, one of my questions that you already answered tonight was, are you asking for enough money? Um, and the question being, we don't want to come back in two years. We don't want to add things just to remove them two or three years down the road. And where possible, we'd like to be able to, you know, from my perspective, increase the return, the programs that have been cut over the years. Um, I think the budget, when you talk about 4%, 4.25 and 4.5 makes a lot of sense. I think that 4.5 number, a goal to reach that every year is great. It gives us two things. It gives us some restoring some of the programs, but it also gives a cushion on years that we might be down a little bit where we won't have to make cuts. Maybe we do the status quo. So again, I think that's some very forward planning. And I really haven't seen that type of planning in the past. So kudos again, because I think this is what the community wants to hear is if I'm gonna increase my taxes, you know, because we're all hurting as well, you know, a lot of people have lost their jobs, others have had other, you know, cuts. How do I know we're not going to come back in two years? And I think it's great that you guys are making a commitment to say, hey, this is a five-year plan. We're not coming back next year, you know? Doesn't mean we're even coming back in five years. We're coming back when the structural deficit gets too big again. And unfortunately, at two and a half, 2.5% increases a year, I think most people would find out in their own homes, they can't live off of that, that that might happen again. Um, so my question was, do you have, are you asking for the right amount so that we're not coming back in a very short period of time? I think you're showing that. Um, so yeah, that's really what I want to talk about is I think this makes sense. I think the school system has done a great job, but I don't know how much longer you can continue to make cuts of staff, programs, individuals. And still have a good, you know, morale within the people and, and a good program. So, you know, I do think this is the time to do it and, um, that's my comment. Oh, I do have one more comment to be long-winded, as my wife will say after this, she watches this. Um, the other thing I do think is important in a town is a good school system. And I think that attracts people. I can tell you over the years, I've met a lot of people that moved to Shrewsbury because of the schools. I moved here because of the schools. My wife being a teacher in another local district. She thought this was a better district. We moved here. Don't know if that's what people are thinking outside of here because they do see we are underfunded compared to other communities. Um, I don't think you showed that slide tonight, but where we fit in compared to all these surrounding similar towns is much lower in the school funding per student. And I would have one question. If we get this override, does that put us closer to what other towns are doing or are we still going to be significantly behind? Because I think you guys do a lot with very little.
You know, I, I don't think we've run any numbers, Mr. O'Connell, in terms of, you know, with this particular uh, budget, if it were increased and it's hard to calculate that year over year because the per pupil expenditures is not only the town appropriated budget, but all sources, whether those are fees, uh, whether those are, uh, grant funds. We've been very successful in recent years. As a matter of fact, very proud that we won an award from the state, um, uh, School Financial Officers Association for actually, uh, being innovative and, and raising uh, funds, uh, outside of, uh, normal channels with, uh, for example, the building of the athletic, uh, field complex at the high school, uh, the, uh, that was funded uh, in great part by Central One Federal Credit Union, the Colonial Connections Program that's funded in great part by uh, Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union and, and lots of other things. Just in the telethon we just had, it's, uh, last weekend for Performing Arts. It's raised $34,000. It's just one recent example. Um, all of those dollars go into the per pupil expenditure. Um, so it isn't as if, I think for people watching, it isn't as if because the amount coming from local taxes is less, that's the cause. It's really from all sources, but obviously, you know, that even compounds and shows you how um, the, the level of, um, local tax revenue going to educational purposes is much lower. Uh, the number I believe, and Mr. Collins can correct me, if we were to spend at the state average per pupil, um, that would require us to spend about another $18 million per year, uh, on per pupil expenditures. Um, so, you know, if we increased our school budget, appropriated budget by, um, you know, this amount, uh, 7 million or so, uh, of course, other districts are going to be building their budgets up, of course, over time. Uh, it would be, uh, moving up, I, I think between, you know, from the bottom 11%. I guess in the example, uh, when we had the override in 2014, uh, we had dropped to somewhere within the bottom 10% prior to that. And I think we popped up to like the bottom 14 or 15%. And then we've slowly trended back down to like now the bottom 11% uh, over those years as we've kind of flatlined again in terms of our, our annual increases. So, um, it's not going to bring us close to what other districts are spending. Um, but we have to be realists. I mean, we're not going to be able to get that level of infusion of cash. What we need to do is take our existing situation, improve upon it. Um, and, and, you know, as you mentioned earlier, get out of this structural issue uh, where every year is a question mark. I know, uh, Mr. Mizikar presented some excellent slides uh, the other night to the Board of Selectmen. Um, and one that was very telling, uh, was showing, uh, some municipal and school department, uh, percentage increases over the last several years. Um, and it's a jagged line. It's up and down and up and down and up and down. And that kind of uncertainty that we're, you know, uh, dealing with, uh, has a real significant opportunity cost as well because it's, it's the cost of not making investments to improve. Uh, but it's also the amount of time and energy um, that the leadership teams in the municipal departments and the school department are spending every year trying to figure out how to just keep things moving, um, and not cutting and, or how we're going to cut all the cuts we have to make with limiting the damage to the schools. Um, and frankly, I'm a little jealous that school leadership teams in other districts aren't spending their time doing that. They're spending their time figuring out how to continue to improve education. Um, instead of how can we make these budget cuts? Um, so that's something that I will be extremely pleased with if the community sees its way forward. I think this Arlington Plan is a really excellent idea. It's very fiscally responsible and brings stability to our budget. Um, that over the next five years, four or five years, however long it's determined it can, it can last, um, that we'll be spending our time on improving education, not spending our time figuring out how we're going to bail ourselves out of another budget cut situation. So I appreciate the comments and, and, uh, uh, we, we certainly, uh, you know, you're absolutely, as you is with other people on this, uh, in this meeting, uh, had children who, who made great contributions to our school district and are very pleased that they're doing well now that they've left us.
Thank you. Hannah Kane, any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Vedder. Um, I want to go back and just touch on the question of the structural deficit for a second because I think there's a couple things that were said that are important to, to know when you're, uh, having that conversation. One is that when this law went into effect, um, it was primarily because of, uh, some communities who were quite egregious every year in terms of how they were approaching their budgets, uh, and, and putting enormous increases on their taxpayers or local taxpayers. And, uh, that was never the case in Shrewsbury. So communities that had very bloated budgets, um, when the two and a half went into effect, they had a lot more room and bloat there that they could work their way through over a number of years. Shrewsbury has always been an extremely well-managed community. We didn't have any excess when this law went into effect. So we didn't have any of that bloat to cut back, uh, and to fall back on. So I think, you know, the fact is we have always been an extremely well-managed community. Um, and, and, and that in some ways, because of the impact of that law at the time, hurt us actually being well-managed. Had we been, uh, a, a community that had, uh, approached, uh, from an excessive capacity, uh, and not been well-managed, we probably could have had some excess, but the reality is, you know, it's also a challenge for us because we are highly residential community. We don't have an enormous amount of uh, commercial and industrial tax revenue. And again, you know, those are places where you're, you make money, uh, on those dollars that are coming in and being paid. And when you have a higher residential base, you have a higher services and, and in fact, enrollment in your school systems that you need to be paying for. So I think that's another piece that, you know, we shouldn't take away from. And the fact is that we also received more state aid than we should have for many, 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 many years. You know, this isn't just, you know, some people like to say that it's, we should be getting more state aid. Well, we actually were held harmless for many years, uh, when they could have actually clawed back some of where we were getting aid. And so again, you know, we would be in, in even more dire situation, uh, than we are now. But I think that, you know, at the end of the day, we, what we get in services and the value that we get as taxpayers uh, exceeds what it is that we're putting in as taxpayers. And, and that is where the rub comes and why we are in the situation um, that we find ourselves in again. Um, so when I look at this though, and, and I think the presentation is, you know, very helpful and very good, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins, and I really appreciate that. I think sometimes it's hard though for people to transition from certainly the magnitude of seeing, you know, 48.7 or whatever it was, FTEs being cut. But translating that into what's the actual impact, you know, I mean, I remember from um, the last time that we were doing the override in 2014, you know, when my daughters had been in first grade, they had had 21 or 22 kids in their class. By the time my son got there, five or six years later, uh, he had 33 and 34 kids in his first grade class. And so I, I, I felt and saw the pain as a parent. Um, and so I think that if, if we can also, as we move forward this discussion, be specific in terms of, you know, how that loss of, um, individuals who are employees will translate into the impact on students. I mean, when you look at it just across the top, you understand that that's an enormous amount of people that you're going to be losing in your system. But I think that we need to help people understand, you know, how does that then impact their particular child? Does it mean there's going to be significantly more kids in the classroom? Does it mean they're going to be losing the ability to choose electives or any other sort of, um, opportunity which is incredibly impactful for them? And again, as a mother of college students, um, you know, I know firsthand by my girls telling me that they are so much more prepared for college than their peers are coming from, that they are in college for. We do an excellent job preparing our students. And so, you know, we don't want to move back on that. That is not something that we should be willing to, to concede on. I have a question for you, Mr. Mizikar, in terms of the American Rescue Plan, the sum of the dollar flexibility um, for the non-school money that would be coming to, uh, municipalities. Is there any opportunity, um, to use some of the funding that we can use on the, the non-school side to help free up additional dollars, which I understand is not solving our longer-term problem, but I'm asking in the short term, the, the, the number impact of the gap next year, is there any opportunity that we have through any of the, the funds coming down that could be moved dollars over to cover some of the gap?
Um, I do think there is likely an opportunity to do that and I'm, I'm just a little reserved because, um, you know, we're only really starting to see some of the, the best details on this plan today. There does seem to be some opportunity to, um, look at FY 19 revenues and compare them to FY 21 uh, and see if there's a gap and fill some of that gap. I think we would be best served by being strategic with that and then ensuring that any dollar that we use for revenue replacement is a guarantee to be restored. Uh, you know, although it's hard to do in a forecast, you know, within, you know, the following, um, year or two, uh, we do know that these funds are able to be spent through December 31st, 2024. So there is a long window. So if we're thoughtful about it, we can uh, provide a long runway, uh, in ensuring that future revenues are there. Um, I can't, I, I, I don't really, uh, have a great enough grasp on it to, to be any more specific than that. Certainly, um, appreciate your assistance in keeping us up to date, uh, with the latest information, especially like details, uh, from the Mass Taxpayers Foundation, things like that that you're even provided. It's, it's very helpful. Uh, but I, I think that there, there is much broader use on the municipal side, uh, than the CARES Act provided, which was just direct pandemic response. And, and, and this is more of a economic stimulus package. So, um, we will work to find. So we will work to find ways to do that.
I think it's going to be important, especially for the public going forward, that, you know, we, we, and I, I agree, I don't think there's much guidance at all at this point. But I do think there's going to be an expectation bringing this question forward that we're clear on, on how we are able to use some of those funds and, and whatever, offsetting whatever number we in the end decide is necessary to bring forward, especially if we are viewing this not as a one year to fill a gap, but thinking about it in a five-year projection. And I guess the only other question that I have is it's very clear to me what the, the cost driver is certainly for opening the Beal and in that, the one point six nine million that that calls. What are the cost drivers though that are creating the balance of it? Is it all personnel costs? Is there any other cost in there that's not personnel that is an increase this year? And I guess, and I, I have one more question and, and as well after that is, what is the cost if you wanted to fund your strategic priorities? You know, what would be the, the dollar figure to execute on that? Is there, is there a sum when you look at the ability to not have made progress on that in the last couple of years? Is there a dollar figure attached to that though, that, you know, we, we are making a deliberate decision not to fund?
Let, let me take that in some reverse order, Mr. Collins, to help me with some of the other, the first question. You know, it's, it's hard to put a dollar figure on the strategic priority pieces because again, just given the circumstances we're in, we didn't go through the exercise to say what would it cost to do X, Y, or Z that's in the, the strategic priorities that we laid out. Some of those things are things that don't necessarily cost money. You know, one of them that we just haven't done the analysis for is that, you know, we, we looking at potentially changing school start times, that would have a transportation cost. That would be a very sort of detailed analysis that would have to be happened depending on what we were looking to do. But, you know, we just haven't really even addressed looking at that because we haven't had the capacity. In terms of the, and, and I think it's just important to note, you know, if there were an opportunity, and this is something that we discussed to, to some degree, I believe maybe last night at school committee, and this is all starting to blend together, these different meetings. But as far as the, you know, the first priority in addition, before we talk, talking about strategic priorities, would be to restore some of the cuts we experienced this year. In my mind, if we had the opportunity next year to bring back the two fifth grade team teachers that we cut this year to bring class size back down, and class size has always been a really critical, critically important element for our families. Representative Kane, you mentioned that earlier about your experience with your children. And then also the two of the three positions we cut at the high school level, a math position and a science position, which, you know, limited and certainly would limit next year more the number of types of elective students could take. And your comment earlier is well taken. And I, I did try to endeavor in the initial budget presentation. And then when we made the cut reduction to illustrate some of the harm. One thing I didn't do in the summary at the beginning of this meeting that I think, and it continues to give me a pit in my stomach every time I say it, is that the budget reductions that I've recommended, and when I say recommend, I mean that this is be, would be a, a, a way to close a gap. None of them are things I would want to do, would be to actually close our elementary media centers. I don't know a whole lot of suburban school districts in a state as wealthy as Massachusetts that don't have enough money to keep their elementary school libraries open. But that would result in all of our, you know, media aides being cut from the budget in moving and actually cutting the elementary media specialist position from the budget as well. So we certainly need to continue and will continue to mention what those issues are. But in terms of, you know, bringing some of the things back that we lost this year that are really critical would be of my first priority, if we're able to, you know, build something back initially. And we certainly can continue to look at some of, there may be some things that are discreet. But some of the, you know, one, one reduction we had this year was we, we cut a hundred thousand dollars from our professional development budget. Many of our strategic priorities involve training staff to do things differently or in a better way. So restoring some of that professional development is something that we, we certainly could put a, a dollar figure on. And that, you know, we first restoring that hundred thousand dollars and then potentially in a future year, building more money in for specific kinds of training would, would be important as well. But as far as your first question, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Collins to address that and see if he can give you the information you're looking for.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Sawyer. And I, I would just pick up on one other piece that, you know, we have strategic priorities and goals that the school committee voted upon for the time period of two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-two. And one of those four strategic priorities was called Space and Resources to Support Effective Learning. And one of those kind of very specific objective goals as part of our strategic plan was, I'm just going to read this literally in our, in our budget book, is to partner with the community to build a new Beal school to address kindergarten through grade four space needs and to provide access to full day kindergarten program with no tuition to all kindergarten students. So that's part of our strategic plan. And in terms of putting a dollar amount on it, I would say that the one point six million dollars that's in this year's budget to open up the Beal school properly is, is, would be the price tag to complete that particular goal, which is, you know, was our foremost goal of that strategic plan. And I think that the other kind of more specific thing about, you know, what's, what's causing the budget pressure for fiscal twenty-two? And, and what I would tell you is that, and the best way to describe this would be that in fiscal twenty, when the pandemic hit us and we had school closures, you know, gubernatorial closures statewide, that, that reduced our operating costs for that year unexpectedly, just like it did everywhere else. So we had savings for substitute teachers. We had savings for school transportation. We had savings for custodial and office supplies. And basically what we were able to do is to kind of carry forward, if you will, some of that savings by not using as much circuit breaker funding in fiscal twenty as we had planned. So we had more circuit breaker funding available in fiscal twenty-one to reduce our tuition expenses this year. That's all used up. That, that kind of savings, if you will, is a classic example of using one-time money to solve a budget problem. It is not a best practice because it creates that funding cliff, if you will, in the succeeding year. And so that's what's causing the undue pressure, if you will, for fiscal twenty-two on, on top and, and causing really the, the need for an eight point five percent budget increase just, just for status quo.
So then if I could just have one follow-up, please, Ms. Fetter. Going back to Dr. Sawyer's comment about a priority bringing back what was lost this last year, in, under what scenario that you played out earlier on the, the four, the four and a quarter and the four and a half? Does, does one of those scenarios encapsulate bringing back what has been lost?
Well, I mean, the unfortunate piece is that, you know, under no scenario, I think, is there a, a number that would be tolerable for the community in, in a one override that would get us one point nine million dollars back of cuts and also allow us some flexibility to do other things that may, may need to do strategically? I think when you saw those scenarios that over the five years incrementally, can we build things back? Yes. I am also hopeful, and, you know, some conversations we've had with Mr. Mizikar and that potentially, although certainly my budget I filed, under the circumstances, I felt we needed to show, you know, what it would take to continue to have what we have and, and open the new Beal school as the major priority. If it were possible to add a few things back in that initial year, if we're going to be looking at an operational override, that would certainly help us, you know, to jumpstart that a little bit. And then we'd have to look very strategically. You know, for example, something that we made that was a very strategic investment a number of years ago is something else that we cut this, this current year. And that is the two advanced math coach positions at the middle school level. Those were brought on board very specifically to address the concerns that parents had expressed who were maybe were moving their students to the Advanced Math and Science Academy in Marlboro. And we were up to the point when I became superintendent that we had about a hundred and forty-four students going to charter schools. And it was, it was as the limited state reimbursement formula ran its course. It was creating enormous pressure on the budget where multi-million dollars were flowing right off the top from the town of Shrewsbury to the Amson Charter School in Marlboro. And over time, you know, through some wise investments that made parents more willing to keep their children in our middle school grades and then, and not move on, as well as frankly, building the New Sherwood Middle School as well. Those investments resulted in, I think, this past year, we had about eighteen students going to charter schools. And so that made a huge difference for our budget. It was with great reluctance that we made those cuts this year. Is that something we'd like to build back at some point? You know, we may, we have other things, you know, obviously our math programs evolved since then. And that's something that we'd have to consider. But it's in far, in terms of the, you know, if there's the opportunity to add those, those priority positions I described earlier, given the, the finances, looking at this Arlington model question, that's certainly something we'd advocate for. And in the context of the size of our budget, it, it's fairly, it's a fairly small percentage to potentially get some benefit, but doesn't really change the numbers long term.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I, it would be possible to respond to one comment that I really appreciate that Representative Kane mentioned, would that be all right?
Sure.
Thank you. And I, I, I think this is adding color to, Dr. Sawyer has been in a meeting similar to this every day of the week, I think. And so I have heard him say it before, and he can correct me if I get any of this wrong. That, to your question, Representative Kane, about how, how do we, how do we build towards those strategic priorities? Right? The community told us what they wanted our schools to look like. And it is our, is our job as best as is possible as stewards to, to build to that. He, he, he told a story about, about not long ago, asking all of the principals, what would you need if you were to build towards those priorities? Right? And, and, and tell us sort of your wish list. Their wish list was somewhere around, correct me, Dr. Sawyer, about two point five million dollars. They were not unreasonable, they were not ridiculous things. They were things we see in other communities. They were not things we can do. And we are now feeling like as a, as a district, it's an exercise in folly and frustration to even ask, what, what, what would you like to do? Because we have been in, at level or cut budgets for, for a cycle enough that we're not even asking that question. And so we've gotten ourselves, I think, behind the ball to even properly, you know, there is a list in, in Dr. Sawyer's head and Mr. Collins has said, I have no, I have no doubt. But, but we haven't even gone through the process recently to really engage with the, the principals and at the even more ground level at the, at the district to think about, about really moving those strategic priorities forward. And I personally think that's indicative of, of just the, the level of pain we're in. You can't ask somebody, what do you, what do you need if you have no ability to deliver it?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Jordan Rubin, any questions or comments?
Uh, nope. Thank you.
All right. Carlos Garcia, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Judy. I don't actually have a question because they've all been answered. But as I, as I think about this education emergency that we find ourselves in, I have been reflecting a lot about the experiences that I had when I was in the public schools. As a graduate of two thousand fifteen, it makes me happy to see Dr. Sawyer always present that picture of what he thinks the spirit of a high school graduate looks like. Because those, those students are, are my friends. Those are from my graduating class. And it's, it's really, you know, great to see them again. And it, and it saddens me to think that the classes that are coming after that might not have the same experiences that we had. To think that media centers in our elementary schools might be closed for students who are curious to learn about new topics or the fact that foreign language keeps getting pushed back and other electives that might not be offered at the high school. It, it just makes me sad to think that we've come to this point where our programs have become so reduced that, you know, that the spirit of a high school graduate that we aspire to, that we, you know, try to teach our students to become and we, we, you know, instill these values into them might not come to fruition just because of the, the fact that we're, we're cutting all these programs. So I'm, I'm thankful that these discussions that we've been having have seemed positive in that we, I, I'm hopeful that an override question will be placed on the ballot. And I, and I thank Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins and the town leadership for, you know, being very vigilant on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Let's try to find a picture of you from that graduation night and put that up on the website as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to echo a lot of the, the comments that the board has made. Definitely, the presentation this evening, you filled in a, a few holes here for me. Thank you for clarifying on the, the eighty-one FTE possible reduction. I had mentioned that at the Finance Committee meeting. Also, one of the things that I brought up the Finance Committee meeting is that my concern is that the state gave us money to open up the Beal school. And so my concern is that they're going to expect us to open that. And you did a good job of laying out, you know, a red and a yellow and a green. Is there a, is there a yellow, green, a, a lime green that we can talk about this evening? That would be like if we are forced to open the Beal school and there's no override put on the, on the ballot? Or if one is put on the ballot and it doesn't pass, what that would mean? If I understand, looking at your February twenty-fourth, you, you go down through there and you detail the thirty-two point six cuts and the impact to class sizes and, and so forth. I mean, forty-eight point seven, excuse me. You go down through and you, you detailed increases in class sizes and all of that. But that was without opening the Beal plan, if I'm correct. So if you have to open Beal, what are we looking at? And I, I hate to be the doomsday girl here, but, you know, that is an option that the community could be faced with.
Yeah, I mean, I guess from my perspective is better, it's, uh, using the traffic light analogy, it almost feels like we'd be running through the yellow as it turns to red and that could create a lot of issues for us. In, in terms of the, you know, if you're, what you're suggesting is somehow, and, and again, I'm not saying this is what would be the case, but if it were somehow, we're being compelled to open with that level of staffing and did not have the money to do it, that we would need to rob Peter to pay Paul and cut elsewhere in-town government to fund the increase. You know, certainly from my perspective, you know, I, I certainly, you know, I'm responsible for making recommendations about the school department budget and, and giving answers as to what, you know, the different effects would be. At the same time, and I'll, I'll certainly defer to school committee members on this, on this issue. You know, I, I think we are, need to look at this as a town-wide issue. It's a town-wide budget structural deficit. And, you know, I, I would be hard pressed to be in a situation that, you know, we wouldn't continue to advocate for not having to do things when, you know, there, there would have to be some, some way to look at the entire town's operations if we were in that desperate of a situation. It would certainly seem foolish to be making additional cuts in, in the school department and cutting teachers who are doing great work. And I, I really appreciated Mr. Chobber's comments earlier because our people are the lifeblood of our school district. The educators and the sports staff were responsible for the quality of what we do and the families who support our kids. But I, I'm imagining a scenario where we're cutting people from one part of the school district to add new people to another. It, you know, it, it sort of defies logic in terms of thinking about that scenario. I, I am optimistic, we're not going to need to worry about that scenario because I'm optimistic that our community is going to rise to the occasion and provide the resources we need to do what has been expected and what we committed as a town with the MSBA to, to do, to build this new school and open it appropriately. So I, I think that there's some speculation about what could or might happen. But, you know, I, I, I am optimistic, we, it won't come to having to make those kinds of decisions.
And I can appreciate that. And I certainly, I hope that that's not the case. But I guess if any, any time, it's good to, you know, have a conversation about what it would mean. And I mean, have a conversation about what it would mean. And I mean, the difference is I guess we're we're looking at like one point, about one point seven million. I mean, just to put that into perspective, I mean, not that I am suggesting this, but just what does that, what does that dollar amount mean? From your slides, it looks like for budgeting purposes, about sixty thousand dollars per teacher, so that would be twenty-eight teachers. Again, I'm not making a projection is that would be what would happen to close the budget, but I think it's it's good to put something out there as for people to understand what we could be talking about if one, we don't have a question put on the ballot because that hasn't been finalized yet, or if one is put and one doesn't pass and we are forced to open Beal. We are looking at a pretty, we're already looking at a pretty bleak situation. We're looking at it a much bleaker situation if if that was the case. So I just think that that's important, because I think that's still an unanswered question out there, so I I wanted to touch on on that, even though it's 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 not a pleasant thing to to think about. And then I guess I did have some questions about if an override is put on, and I was extremely impressed with the work that Mr. Mizikar did for detailing things out or or looking historically back for for eighteen years and basically came up with a a need for a budget increase of four point five percent based on historic trending. I think I may know know the answer to it, but what I'm interested in is, and Mr. Collins, you had run a couple scenarios with the four point two-five and four point four-five, and what I'm curious about is how you're calculating those outer years and why there's why those percentages actually give us more money in outer years to to try to add to the program where if historically for eighteen years, we've had four point five budget increases and we've and we constantly have had to cut and not been able to add. Could could you explain that to me, please?
Well, I can try. I mean, I think, you know, part of the answer there is you know, the 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 notion of using an average, right? And there's lots of literature about the the benefits and the limitations of using averages. And so you know, I think that's kind of the first and foremost is averages are just that, they're just playing averages and looking back on history, and they're they're very useful. But they have to be taken in context. In terms of the forecast for the five-year forecast, what was done is to take a look at our operation as it sits presently and use near-term cost escalators for where we are for inflationary purposes. So, for example, supplies, materials, we're in, you know, still in a relatively low inflationary environment in kind of, you know, pushing those forward for for years. I know that when we did the, when I did the last, you know, the work looking back for twenty years, that there was inflationary fluctuations, if you will, during that time period. So the look forward, the the five-year look forward takes a look at the near term, closer term in using what we know to be some cost escalators that are applicable to labor. You know, we're going to have to go out to bid for a new school transportation contract in fiscal twenty-three. And so I've I've got an escalator that's higher than that for that particular year. And that that's kind of the the using using data and near term, more near term information to inform the future is probably the best way that I could describe that. And I also want to convey that this is, in fact, forecasting. And there is a level of precision here or variance of precision to be expected. That, you know, th- this isn't exactly the way that it's going to play out, because we live in the real world and have to react to the real world. And in the public school district, what that means is unlike some private institutions or a private school where you can regulate your environment in terms of the enrollment, we can't do that. Private school operations, of course, can have filters like applications and tests to just accept students that they would like to to accept. Public school, you can't do that. And so there's there's, you know, there's a certain dynamism that we live with in the school budget on an annual basis. But, you know, this is, this is the best work that I could do, looking forward, using kind of near-term information. And that's the best way that I could explain that.
So I kind of agree with, I think, the comments that Mr. O'Connell made is that I I think looking at that because obviously as you say, they're projections, and so I would rather see us ask for the four point five or calculate a four point five because, you know, we may or or, you know, we don't know how well, how good those projections are. And I think it would be better personally, if if we had at least that for a buffer, if we don't need it, we don't need to to spend it. I mean, that's part of what the the stabilization is is for, that at least my understanding of of this override. So, you know, although four point two-five looks good on paper, I think the four point five definitely would, you know, give the schools more opportunity to not to have to make cuts. And I think that I think as a community, if we step up, people aren't going to want to see us get to out to to a year where we're we're cutting, or like we did this year, or like we're talking about cutting for for fiscal year twenty-two. I think that that's something that's going to be really important to the town is to 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 not have this instability and that we could start to see, you know, some you know, definitely incremental increases in the school and, you know, better programming, and certainly not have the yo-yoing effect. I would also assume that there's got to be some we're going to be better off programmatically, there's got to be a cost to having staff that's removed and then staff that's added. I mean, companies talk a lot about what it costs to bring a new employee on you know, to that first year. So there are costs, there's productivity costs, there's actual costs and so forth. So I think that there's going to be a lot of benefits to the community if we can stabilize, actually stabilize this and have this sort of plan. So I'm definitely in favor of this. And and again, I got to thank Mr. Mizikar and the work that you, Mr. Collins, and Dr. Sawyer are doing. So at this point, what I want to do is, the school committee's been very patient here, so I'm sure there's probably you have some comments that you would like to make. So this is a, so if you could by shorthand, if there's something that you'd like to to say. Sandy?
Thanks, Judy. I just also wanted to thank Mr. Mizikar, Dr. Sawyer, and Mr. Collins. I think this opportunity we have presented what Mr. Mizikar has presented to the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee is, it's really an opportunity to do something different. It provides this stability, we can invest and sustain the community going forward. I know it's something different, but I do feel from the School Committee perspective, we we're not going to have to have this up and down budget cycle. One of the things that we did talk about a little, but I want to mention again, attracting and retaining staff is a concern as we move forward as well. We pride ourselves on providing excellent educational services. And back in fourteen, we did lose some staff because we did have teachers who were worried about, you know, what is going to happen. And I think right now, we're not seeing communities around us having this same type of issue. So I think it is a concern moving forward. This is a great opportunity for us to set the budget for a period of time to maintain services, to improve services for the students, for the taxpayers. So I I, again, I want to thank everybody who's been involved in it, and there is a lot of work going on behind the scenes as well. The Board of Selectmen and the members who we've been working with. A lot's happening. So thank you again for everybody involved. We've had a lot of meetings, and I want to thank the Finance Committee for giving us the opportunity to meet with you. I know we're going to have a meeting down the road, but this gave us an opportunity to give you guys some information to kind of answer any questions you have as we kind of finalize the budget. So thank you.
Any other comments for School Committee members? Jason?
Briefly and not to belabor any points, I want to thank the Finance Committee and Mr. Mizikar for joining us this evening. I do just want to say, I think that the air of the dialogue in this town over the past few weeks has been very much one about addressing a long-term situation, finding a fix for this community that meets the residents' needs, that meets the school department's needs for a period of years as opposed to one that is merely about responding to an emergency. So I've been very encouraged by the quality of the dialogue. And I want to thank the the Finance Committee for taking part in this discussion.
Thank you. Any, anyone else from the School Committee? Okay, at this point, I'm going to circle back any other comments or questions from the Finance Committee. Mr. O'Connell?
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. I did have a question, two questions, one for Dr. Sawyer, one for Mr. Mizikar. Start with Mr. Mizikar. If we do get an override, and override is passed, town has always been responsible. I'm assuming that if somehow we started seeing more revenue than we expected, we could put, we would be putting some of that into a stabilization fund, and we wouldn't necessarily be going off and spending every dime that comes in. We're so, we're making a pact with the town, if we do an override that, we're asking for this override this amount of money, but we're not going to take it as a windfall, i.e. if we get the COVID funds in and they're less restricted than we expect, yes, we can use that to stabilize for this year, but doesn't mean we have to actually spend all of that. We can put some of it aside going further down the road so that, again, we can postpone the ups and downs, we can you know, smooth out the ride as we go down the budget cycles and maybe even postpone a another override vote. So is that
I would a hundred percent agree with those comments. What we have plenty of options in the future. We we do intend to utilize a stabilization fund with its sole purpose of prolonging the amount of time before we have to come back and providing stability. We have plenty of levers to pull. I mean, in really extreme circumstances, you don't have to raise the the full levy every year, you know, if if, you know, we have an economic boom that that comes forward, that would only prolong the time that we have to ask again. And we'll certainly be fiscally responsible. There is a framework document that's being developed jointly by the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen, it's a a framework to the community with what the the path is, the forecast model that we're using, the timeframe, the expenditure rate and things like that, that will be front and center in every discussion and every budget cycle thereafter, if it would pass.
And Dr. Sawyer, it's kind of a similar question to you. Understanding that, again, you've the school system has been, you know, constrained for years and years and years, you know, when we get this override, I know we have good plans with the spend will come with the override, if for some reason we get less restricted funding on the COVID funds coming in and you actually find yourself with a lot more budget dollars, it's not to say you're just going to spend those dollars, we would be looking at how to portion those out over the next four or five years again, to make sure that we're going to be in a smooth transition up there, we're not going to have the ups and downs. And yes, I think where we can restore things that are important to the school system, we should be talking about that and and trying to do that. But I think that's my understanding is where we would be going with it. And I would guess also the town manager could also enforce that if you wanted to, because he could, you know, put up his budget numbers as well. But, you know, you know, I I just want to make sure that as a community, I think here we're all understand it, but it's not us. It's the whole town that has to be willing, or fifty-some-odd percent of the town, that had one percent, I guess, that has to be willing to do an override. And I want to make sure that we are very clear with them about and transparent in how this money was spending and what we're doing, and that it is needed. I think you've been very transparent about that, the money is needed. If we want to keep Shrewsbury at the caliber it should be at and where it has been at. And Hannah, you mentioned your your daughters are at college and they you know, say how prepared they are compared to other near their classmates. My children have had the same experience. I think Shrewsbury Schools have outperformed my expectations when I moved here, but as I said, it has been tougher and tougher for you guys to do that, and I applaud all the teachers and administrators, and I've met many of them over the years for good reasons, but I've met many of them, great job, but I think we need to convince the whole town that this isn't just, hey, let's grab this money, we're just going to go off and spend it. That we have a plan, you presented that, and then if there's extra money coming in through these COVID reliefs, that we're just not going to willy-nilly spend it, we're going to you know, spend it correctly and improve the whole town, because this is not a school system deficit either, it's the whole town's deficit. We've seen fees go up for trash, we've seen fees go up for everything else. We've seen police departments having issues. So I want to make sure what we, we're doing this for the schools, we're doing it for the rest of the town as well. It's not just one department, it's all the departments. And thank you.
Yeah, I think obviously, to tonight's conversation, we're centering on the schools, but the override certainly wouldn't be just for the schools. There is a a piece for for the municipal as well. So I think that that's a good point, and let's, you know, hopefully, you know, lots and lots of people are watching this, but let's just underscore that point that any override would would be for the entire town, not just the schools, but we're focusing on the schools tonight because we're talking with the School Committee. And also part of the Arlington model that's been discussed is there's an oversight committee, at least that Arlington had. I know that there's been some discussion, I don't know where that, you know, might come into play, but that at least their committee is made up of a cross-sections of of people that provides at least that one more layer of transparency and, you know, overarching review of how the money is spent. And I mean, I think I would encourage that we do that as well. I mean, we are adopting the Arlington model because it has worked well, so therefore I recommend that we would adopt, you know, all of the pieces of it, including an oversight committee. It doesn't really do a lot of good to adopt a a model that works well, but then throw out portions of it. So I would encourage that 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 would be part of the dialogue. Any other questions or comments from Finance Committee or actually anybody at this point? Mr. Mizikar, anything that you would like to add? Okay, so going one more round here, I don't see any hands, so I want to really thank the School Committee and the School Administration and Mr. Mizikar for for being here and discussing this with us. Definitely a lot of meetings and a lot of long meetings, and there's a lot of meetings that are going to be coming forward, but this is a a really important important topic. Like one of the most important topics that we could be discussing. So I I want to thank you very much for for taking the time to meet with us this evening. So at this point, then, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. And can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Great. All right, going to go down through and to vote on adjourning. Mark Adler?
Aye.
Vikram Chabur?
Aye.
Dennis O'Connell?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin?
Aye.
Carlos Garcia?
Aye.
Judy Vetter, aye. This meeting is now adjourned. Have a good evening.
Thank you all very much.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.